Good morning. Consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Gibbon. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the board can come on up. Be limited in time to five minutes per speaker. There's a maximum of 30 minutes available per meeting for the public comment. Anyone want to come up? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports.
No, we got one.
Oh.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota.
Good morning.
I'd like to talk about last week's meeting. And we spent four hours in here talking about all sorts of things. Then we got to the integrity of the elections. And Commissioner Aaron's addressed this people here and was belittled. And I took the bait and I reacted and I want to apologize for that. I owe each and everyone that was in this room an apology. But I'd like to see our election integrity at the top of the list, not at the bottom. And we spent hours talking about a cattle confinement. We won't take five minutes to talk about election integrity. Something's wrong with this situation. You know, you guys are our leaders and I would expect better and I certainly expect better of myself. I hope you accept my apologies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have a report they'd like to make? If not, we'll move on to our regular business. We have a public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on sale liquor license.
This is a public hearing to consider the application for a temporary on sale liquor license to operate outside of a municipality for the Sioux Falls Community Foundation Incorporated to hold a special event on May 5th, 2022 on the property legally described as Track 1 Foster Edition, East Half, Southwest Quarter, 21150, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Location address is 47238 271st Street. And I believe Mary Colstrude is present to speak on behalf of the application.
Good morning. Commissioner Mary Colstrude with the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. We host an annual fundraiser this year. It will be at Landscape Garden Center. So again, this is a private event, ticketed only. We will serve liquor malt beverages as well. We have contracted with a twist, which is a bartending service. So they will be in charge of IDing, making sure everyone's 21. Obviously alcohol cannot leave the premise. And again, it's a private ticketed event. So any questions are welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Mary? Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Come on up. Anybody here to speak against the application? If not, I consider a motion.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to item two on our agenda. It's a public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of consideration of the petition to vacate the following described highway. Oak Ridge Road, Cedar Circle, and Riverview Road.
Sherri, are you going to speak to that or?
Mr. Tobin.
Okay. Good morning. Sherri, just state your name and address, please.
Good morning. A.J. Swanson. My business address is 27452 482nd Avenue, Canton 57013. I'm an attorney and am privileged to represent the applicant Oak Ridge Estate LLC in this effort to vacate three roads or streets that exist by virtue of a 1979 plat, but which, other than some dirt scratching that was done to support a single family home on this property that was destroyed by fire many, many years ago and has since been obliterated, these roads have never been open for travel. The plat dedication in 1979 was never accepted by any road authority. This extends off a road for 273rd Street, which is a secondary township road, under the auspices of both Springdale and Dayton Townships. I'm also privileged to represent those townships as to this road. And we have already vacated the statutory highways that led into this property. I now represent the sole owner of this property, Oak Ridge Estate. It will be used to support a new single family home. And part of the home will be sitting on part of this right away, which we hope to vacate. We did file a private driveway easement last week, which does serve each of the lots. We are not expecting to have those lots sold, but yet there will be a driveway easement to each of the lots. And that's basically the story. We hope to move forward with construction on this project, provided the road is vacated. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for A.J.?
Did you say you had already registered the easement?
Yeah, that was filed in last week. It appears at Book 32 of miscellaneous records, page 5. It was recorded with the registered deeds on April the 8th.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Swanson? If not, I consider a motion. Or back up. Anybody here to speak in favor of the application other than Mr. Swanson? All right. If not, anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I'd consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the application in full.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Go ahead and move on to item three on our agenda. Go ahead and move on to item three on our agenda. Good morning.
So I have some handouts. Would you like them first?
Can you first just state your name and address?
My name is Julie Dykstra and I work for the South Dakota Department of Health and I am the Southeast Regional Manager. And then with me today, I also have Paula Mazurik, who is my nurse team lead for the Southeast Region as well. And we have some data to present for community health and WIC services in your community.
Sure.
And my address, I have an office in Mitchell, so 1420 North Main in Mitchell.
Thank you.
And my home is in Lenox. I live on 1012 South Garfield.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. As working for the Department of Health, the first slide shows you the regions that the state is divided into. And I cover the green area in the bottom corner, the southeast corner. And so recently, we've had some resignations in our area. So one was in Yankton. And the Yankton office is covering Union County as well. And then we've also had a resignation in our Sioux Falls office. So as I'm looking to fill those positions, we start looking at the data within the counties and how we are covering them and if there's anything that we can do to improve that coverage. So when we go to the second slide, the third slide that talks about the current WIC coverage. So currently, our program WIC is a program for women, infants, and children. And it's a federally funded program through the Department of Agriculture. And then they partner with Department of Health to implement that program. And so right now, what this is showing is at 11% is our coverage rate or participation rate of WIC participants compared to what the potential is in your community. So when we go, so right now, it shows it's at 11%. And so what we'd like to do is try to increase that to at least get to 50% coverage for you. So when we look at page, the next slide, for the WIC monthly participation. So the 11% is actually based on the participation rate in your county in the office that we have here, which is Canton. So the average caseload right now for Canton is at about 70. And when we look at the potential eligible, we have 755 eligible for the WIC program. And so what we are looking at doing is trying to increase the hours. So right now, we are serving your county one day a week. And I think with that, there is some limitations for the participants where they may not feel like they have the ability to come to the office. So either they don't come or they're traveling elsewhere with, outside your county to get services. So the 2021 potential eligible applicants just shows that you have 755 that are eligible for the program. I also included the WIC retailer and WIC dollars spent slide. So that shows of the WIC participants in your county, they are redeeming right now $224,000 at the retailers in your community. And Lincoln County has available accepting WIC as Fairway &amp; Tea or Harrisburg Sunshine Foods in both Canton and Lenox. And they've added a Fairway &amp; Tea. And then there's also the Hy-Vee Fresh and Harrisburg &amp; Tea. And then we also have a Walmart on South Minnesota and 85th Street. We compiled some Lincoln County data for you. And this just shows median age. So it looks, you know, we've got some families in here that would have children from them from that age of birth to five. And then we looked at the poverty rate, the median income, and the unemployment rate for your community. And then along with the WIC program, we also have some internal child health services that we also provide. And that would be oral health assessments. We do fluoride applications, immunizations. We do pregnancy care with the moms, postpartum services, breastfeeding support. We do depression screenings, infant and child developmental screens. So they find that if we screen the children sooner, the sooner that we get them in for assistance and support, the better the outcome is and the better they do in school. We do safe sleep education. And then we also issue pack and place for a safe sleep environment. Community partnerships. And then we also do referrals to other services for car seats, the quit line, family planning, and then of course with Medicaid, TANF, and SNAP, which in the office here, that's kind of a combined office because all services are located within there. So with the data that we've compiled and looking at your caseload, you know, the 755 is the potential that we could reach. And so with that, we are looking at increasing our service time in your community to three days a week instead of the current one day a week. And so with that, Janet Hankey is your clerical. And she is currently working one day a week. So that's what we were coming to propose if you would be interested in increasing clerical time here to three days a week. We provide the nurse and the county usually provides the space and clerical support for us. When we were looking at like a mileage map that was on the back of the travel calculations, we're also looking at, you know, where are these people going if they're not coming to Canton or if they're not going to Sioux Falls? And so some are going to Viberg, some are going to Vermillion, some are going down to Elk Point. And so we're also looking at placing an office in the Alcestor Beersford area as well so that we can try to reach some of them people to let them know that, you know, we'll be available to help serve them. So our request today with the data that we have would be, you know, providing services three days a week with clerical support offered.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Dykstra?
Julie, before we go into the increasing, 11% looks exceedingly low in comparison to all the counties that you have listed around us.
Yeah.
So is the only reason why that is so low is because of our availability? Or are there other extenuating situations that we should be aware of?
Okay. So that's kind of the unknown at this point. I mean, so when I look at, when you look at this WIC monthly participation page, so this shows that you are seeing 71 in the Canton office. But it also shows that 323 participants in your county are seeking services elsewhere. So when we look at them seeking services elsewhere, they could be spending their dollars in another community as well where they could be, if they were served here, would probably return, you know, and shop at your local stores, which is then more revenue back into your community for shopping. I have visited with the staff here. So your nurse that comes down is Jen Atkinson. And then we have Stacy Scaff as dietitian service and Janet. And, you know, they said that people do go to Sioux Falls office or go elsewhere because of the limited days, the limited time that we are down here. So I worked in a small community. I am from Aurora County. And so just knowing how people select their services, I do think that they do like a small community and I think they would come here if we were available more days in the week.
Is our space adequate that we have allocated for these services? Are they adequate at the time or are they too crowded or?
No, I feel you have a nice facility and I feel like you have a nice room. I mean, we've got some offices across the state that are much smaller and we still serve people. So yes, I feel, so you've got, so you've got an office space for Janet, the clerical. You've got a little toy area, which is nice. And then you've also got a separate nurse and dietitian room. So I think, I think that meets the needs.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a question, so I understand Janet works for the system full time and she would just be shifting some of her time more to Canton? Or is she willing to pick up extra days of work?
Okay. So I did visit with her about that because, you know, she's.
It's kind of an important part of this.
Yes, I know. Everything is just like dependent, like dominoes. One thing with her is she's stepping into the retirement phase of her life.
That was going to be my name. You talked about, you know, resignations and we're expanding services and how are we going to be able to do that?
Right. So I have visited with her and she said that, you know, up to two days a week is what she would like to do, but really no more than that. So then we're, you know, we're kind of back at that drawing board of, you know, how are we going to fit that support for three days a week?
And did you say you had other resignations in the system too that you're still trying to fill?
Okay. So on the state level, not the county level. So I've got a nurse in Sioux Falls that had resigned and I'm filling her spot. So what I'd like to do, instead of giving all that time to Sioux Falls, I'm going to shift some of that time down here is what I'm planning to do to help meet this need a little better and to come to the people rather than having to drive to us.
Other questions?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any idea what kind of impact money would cost? Do you have any idea on that? Because everything we do is predicated on budgets. So you got some estimate or something?
You know, when I look at the food package dollar, so we're looking at $100, $150 a month for the food package, whether that be the infant, the child, or the pregnant woman. And so when we look at that benefit to the family and if we get them referred to Medicaid, what that ends up doing is saving, it's preventative care. And it's also saving dollars for food that they now can spend on other things that programs can't help them with, diapers and car repair and things such as that. And so the other thing that I think about is how, I mean, if you have a welfare program in your community, if we are advocating for preventative care, getting them in for dental care, keeping them on, you know, with insurance or getting them on, what it's going to do is in the end, hopefully reduce that amount on welfare that's coming back to you.
I think for every participant on the WIC program too, the state reimburses the county back.
Yes.
For a certain amount of that clerical support. So as that number goes up, that support goes up.
So we have a WIC expenditure report that the state has in place with each county for the clerical, the county clerical time. And so that is based on participation. So as that participation would increase, the expense report then pays you back each month per participation rate.
Oh.
And then any training that's involved, that is placed on that expenditure report and WIC reimburses the county for that, for the clerical time to do that.
Julie.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for the report. So if I'm reading this correctly, 300, it says on the WIC monthly participation slide.
Yes.
323 participants are receiving WIC benefits from an office outside the county.
Yes.
So that means those are Lincoln County citizens, but they go to another county.
Yes.
So for example, if I live at the northern edge of the county, it's probably easier for me to just drive to Sioux Falls. Right? And.
Yeah. So actually, I did not include the map, but we have a map that shows participation rate by zip code. And so you're exactly right. So we have a zip code that's actually Sioux Falls address, but it falls into Lincoln County, which is 57108. And up there, we have 193 people participating. So of the 323 that are going elsewhere, 200 of them are up there. But then we've got these other 100 and some that are still going somewhere else, whether it be Viberg or they're heading south or to Vermillion.
Because they may live at the edge of the county.
Yes.
And it's just, you know, it's easier, more convenient to actually drive to the other county.
Right.
When I look at the numbers here, I see that 71 people are currently using this office here. So does that 71 come out of the 323? Or do you add that in and then you get a total of 394 total participants?
Yes, right. So 398 are participating in your county.
Okay.
And then 71 are coming here.
Okay.
So what we'd like to do is increase our time here to hopefully increase participation in this community.
So in terms of the 755 people that are eligible, we currently have 398. So that'd be about, what, 56% or so?
Forty, we have 42% right now.
Forty, 42%.
Participation.
Okay.
And so we're looking to try to increase that to at least 50 or above.
And get them participating.
Here.
Here versus.
Okay. Then get your WIC redemption at the stores back in your communities so that they're not traveling somewhere else.
Early intervention's the key.
Yes.
The sooner you provide that service at an earlier age, you practically increase in what can be done versus starting it at a later age. So.
So I've been in community health for 20 years and my coworker here has been 34. So we've had many years of working with the program and in the communities. And you're right. I mean, the sooner we can get in there, the better. You know, I came from a community that had a lot of influx of Hispanics, you know, and they have no idea of prevention or care. And so, you know, one thing that I think about is if they weren't coming to me to say, you need to go to the dentist, they waited till they had a toothache and went to the emergency room on a Saturday night with no insurance. Okay, then what, that ends up falling back on the county. And so those are things that we try to work to do to get those referrals in place, get the preventative care done for a better outcome in the end.
I too came from a smaller county. I worked in Bonham County for 34 years. And when I started and, you know, kind of learned about public health, it was like, man, this is the best program. I can't believe more folks aren't using this. And when I started, the caseload in Bonham was about 60. And we don't have near the population you do over there. And I told the managers, I'm going to get this to at least 100. And we actually came very close to 200 because you develop relationships with families and then it just keeps growing and it just gets better. And I think the things we do besides WIC, WIC is great. It's kind of the carrot. But I tell you what, the other things that we do besides WIC that help these families, it's really a great part of our job and what we do. But that caseload down there is now at about 130, around that right now. And, you know, we're covering pretty good percentage of our caseload that, you know, is out there. So we're pretty proud of that.
Madam Chair, if you're ready, I would offer a motion to approve this request.
All right. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Madam Chair.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. I thank you very much. And, you know, we will be back to visit with you and give you updates as we work on this. And then we visit with the auditor about hours. I mean, how will we go about that for the county clerical visiting with Janet?
Um, Sherri, what, hours? Discuss with who?
Hours of the office?
Right.
We can get together.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item four on our agenda. Board action regarding some DOT easements on Highway 18 in Terry.
Good morning. So this morning, I've asked Mark Kirkaby to give you a presentation on the, on some easement and right of way access that they would like to for the Highway 18 reconstruction project. So at the end of his presentation, I guess, you know, you can ask questions. They have paperwork all drawn up already for you to sign off on. So I guess at the conclusion of that, I would look for authorization for the chair to execute those easement agreements. So, all right. So I'll let Mark come up and, like I said, he's got some handouts for you, I believe.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I am Mark Kirkaby with the Department of Transportation. Our physical central office is at 700 East Broadway in Pier. And Madam Chair, could I approach and hand out a couple little tiny maps if I can say?
Absolutely. If you have an extra copy, you can put them up on the screen as well.
And if you don't, you can use mine and I'll play, watch along there.
Madam Chair, to be honest with you, Terry suggested that and I told him with my technical abilities, I get excited when I can put an attachment on an email.
All right.
You have one, Terry?
Understood.
Just use, I'll follow along. I can see it on the screen. Thank you.
Beautiful. Madam Chair, on behalf of the citizens of South Dakota and members of the commission, the state of South Dakota is seeking to acquire from your real estate holdings at your highway facility at the Lincoln County Highway Shop, .28 acres of right of way and an additional 4/10 of an acre of temporary construction easement so we can do this project. Highway 18, a year from right now, we will be constructing this project. It's going to be running from Canton all the way to I-29. Well, there certainly will be a median in there. There's going to be four lanes of bona fide traffic. My conservative estimate, and I'm not an engineer, the only thing they trust me with is this little ruler. I'm leaning towards that 40 to 50 million dollar project. A awful lot of jobs are going to be created out of this as well. But we do need. But we do need this right-of-way, not only from you, but about another fifty-five-ish property owners throughout this project, so we can actually be, build the road. The other area that, well, excuse me, I should probably do that, the temporary easement itself, when I had previous discussions with Terry, and he certainly did his due diligence in identifying specific areas on those, on that real estate holding, that we will not impact current asphalt, current concrete, is certainly abiding by the safety rules of the existing fueling stations there, so those are clearly identified and approved through the Federal Highway Authority, as well as the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Your current approach on your facilities will remain, I believe it's forty-foot, and that will be rebuilt. We do not have to touch that underground culvert that's underneath your approach right now. And that project itself really does start on that very east end of that, right at your real estate holdings, as we continue to, to go west to, to the truck stop. The other area, that temporary easement area, is going to allow us to get in and do that grading and the ditch work, to reclaim any disturbed grass areas, and make sure that grass is reestablished and growing on that. And that temporary easement, it does disappear one year following the completion of that project. Our experts, and I say that because there's none of my DOT engineers in the staff right now, I do pick on them because I'm not an engineer. They, they do anticipate this is going to be a one-year project, it's very aggressive schedule. We will do one side of the road at a time, probably shift to the other, depending on the alignment, the configuration of that road, but it will be, on its completion, solid concrete for, for eight total miles. The additional request, I did that again, the additional request is, we call it a relocation. I'm sure sometime in the past, you granted some local service organizations to plant a little rotary sign, and I think it's a, a line sign as well, on your, your, your property. It's certainly there. But we are asking that to be removed, so that we do not damage that when we're in that area during construction, and with, with that, we certainly will compensate for that time as well. It can go back exactly where it is. Your existing big sign right there is certainly not going to be disturbed, and that's on our plans as well. I provided Terry a complete set of these road construction plans. Our compensation offer to Lincoln County is the same that we would offer to any impacted property owner. We're valuing that acreage for right-of-way, at that twenty thousand dollar impacted rural acreage value, and forty-eight hundred dollars per acre for temporary easement. And I do have, I did make a, when I did these documents a few weeks ago and presented them to Terry, I did make a twenty-dollar error on the benefit of the taxpayers of South Dakota, and that's not accurate. I did retype these documents, and I do have both the right-of-way and the temporary easement agreements typed up to ensure that they're accuracy. But with that, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, that is my short little spiel to present to you for your consideration, and I would stand by for any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Mark?
You said this will be a one-year project?
That, that is correct.
Wasn't it pretty much twenty-three, twenty-four originally, or?
Y- y- yes, if I could, Madam, Madam Chair, respond to that question. That one-year construction project, that is when the design, it's intended to have all the surface work done, that following year is when we get back in there and do any grading, maybe do some changing on possibly, some culverts, and making sure that grass grows, but that aggressive schedule, actually, physical hardtop is one year, but it is a two-year construction period, that's a very good clarification.
Thank you, any other questions? If not, I consider a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Sean, you call the roll.
Is this a motion to approve the easements, as well as the relocation of the sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome to dish it to the highway, four lane all the way.
Yeah, it will be, if I could just indulge, there certainly will be some growing pains, there, there's no question. I, my physical residence is in Rapid City. This project has been delayed and pushed, and there, there's some, there's certainly some issues. Throughout the course of this project, we do have to, we, the taxpayers, do have to acquire five separate properties. I mean, some people, their lives are going to change. But going from a two-lane to a four-lane, there's no question, it's going to hopefully increase commerce, and it's designed for that safety aspect, and, you know, locally, I know that Laura's lattes and the car washes will, will do well through, through that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to item five on our agenda, Terry?
For execution? Yes.
The next item I have is approval and authorize the chair to execute contract with Cram Construction for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two bridge project. Again, just for bringing up the speed, the structure, it's for structure, replacing structures forty-two, zero one zero dash one oh nine, and forty-two, zero zero four dash one zero zero. Both of these are on County Road one oh three, on the west side of Lennox. Again, that first structure I listed, we will be doing a cost share with the city of Lennox, they're, they're good for twenty percent, I believe, up to like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, maybe. We had signed that agreement several months ago. Total contract price is one million dollars, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-four and forty-eight cents.
All right, heard the request, any questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Wendy Spector. Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning. This is just my first quarter report from the four-H office. I'll update you on our building progress. The building committee has met several times in this quarter, and chose a builder to put up the show ring. The foundation released the funds and signed the contract to move ahead with Cleary Building, and the plan is for materials to be delivered on Thursday, but that'll be depending on the weather, and with construction to begin on Monday. I have visited clubs in Beersford, Lennox, and Canton to talk about different items club members need to do, and some new items we have available. Cheating sports practices in the building started January ninth, and they've met every Sunday since then, and their last practice indoors was this past Sunday. They've had two outdoor practices so far. Their state shoot will be the last weekend in April, and we have forty-four entries from twenty-eight members going to the state shoot. We held our first consumer decision-making and horticulture skillathon this year on President's Day, when a lot of schools didn't have classes that day. We had twenty-seven members from Lincoln, Turner, Yankton, and Minnehaha Counties participate. Then we held the second one in Beersford in conjunction with Union County in March, and we had twenty-one members from Lincoln, Union, and Clay come to those. We held a youth for the quality care of animals training at Four Options in Sioux Falls, Lennox, Beersford, and Canton this quarter. That is something that's required of anybody who's going to show an animal at the county or state fair. So we had forty-two youth attend among those four times, and we have one more opportunity June first in Lennox. We held our market beef weigh-in at the Hazel Feed Lot in Beersford, March nineteenth, and we hosted a youth AI clinic, March eighteenth, in the Colton and Crooks area. We had aimed for thirty participants, and we had thirty-three come, with more people that still wanted to come to that, so that was very well attended. Chad mentioned a little bit last week how the Raising the Roof fundraiser went March twenty-sixth. The auctions raised twenty-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars, total with ticket and drink sales and after expenses was twenty-six thousand, two hundred and three dollars and thirty cents, so. As the four-H program advisor, I partnered with the Sioux Empire Livestock Show for the last week in January. I completed the Achieving the Extension mission through volunteering, training, with multiple online meetings and homeworks from January through March. I've had multiple Zoom meetings with the poultry committee, CDM committee, and the workforce outcome team that I serve on with the state four-H. Recorded a couple of videos for that workforce outcome team with businesses in our county. I attended the South District Networking Day in Mitchell, March twenty-fourth, with other four-H professionals from our area. And then our commercial pesticide applicator training that we do in our office, we've had eight testers come in so far this quarter, and we have four more scheduled for April. So, and then you can see our facility usage for January through March was a lot of various club meetings, leaders' meetings, committee meetings, dog practices, horse safety training, skillathons, YQCA, raise the roof, and fruit delivery. And then, so far in this quarter, towns and townships met in our building April fifth. Lennox Sunstrom FFA held their floor culture and poultry contest yesterday in our building, and then CFEL has a meeting this month, and we have a graduation recep- reception planned in May, so. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? If not, thanks, Wendy.
Okay.
Next, I, I'm impressed by the improvements and participation that you've been able to bring together. Good job.
Okay, and then, next on the agenda, we.
Yeah.
Chad, Hazel, and Jeremy Choos from the foundation are going to address this next item.
Sure. Okay, yep, come on up.
Jeremy's got some stuff to hand to you guys, so you can all follow along with what I'm talking about. In, in an effort to.
Thank you.
Come up with new ideas and ways to bring in some more funds for the Fairgrounds project, I guess we're here to ask about having a tractor pull on the Fairgrounds, the, on the new Fairgrounds in Lennox. Foundation's been working extremely hard at bringing in funds, and I think our progress out there kind of shows that. But we all know we can only sell so many pies, and even though we have wonderful businesses in the county that have been supporting this, you can only go ask them for donations so many times. Let me explain how this idea came about. We, some of, some of you may remember there used to be a tractor pull at the Lincoln County Achievement Days. I don't remember a lot of details about it and why it stopped. I would assume space and cost were probably two of the big ones. I just remember that it stopped the year before I was old enough to do it, so. Some of the, the younger four-Hers, or not younger ones, the older four-Hers, heard that there used to be one there, and asked, well, why don't we do that anymore? Well, we had to say, well, it just kind of went away, and nobody's ever really brought it back. And with that being said, in an effort to somewhat revive some history of Lincoln County Achievement Days in Canton at the new facility in Lennox, we'd like to try and put on a tractor pull this year to bring in some more money. We, we passed it around the group, and everybody thought it was a decent idea, so we started checking into a dates that were available to have it. July third and August seventeenth, and August seventeenth falls during the Turner County Fair, which we figured would not be a good deal for us. Who's going to, who's going to come over to Lennox when they can go to the Turner County Fair and Parker? So we tentatively snagged the, the July third spot, so that we had our name on it if we could get this pulled off. And then we were contacted by the Lennox Commercial Club, the group that puts on the Fourth of July celebration in Lennox, and they said that they did not have anything planned for Sunday afternoon, July third, after their morning church service, and that they'd be willing to help us with advertising and promotion, people to help at the gate, and add it to their scheduled events, which for a project like this, for us, was, that was a huge help, just with the advertising part and letting, getting it out there that we were going to do it. So with all that being said, we reached the point in the planning where we have to come to you and ask, what are your stipulations about an event like this? And where it, and it, and if you have anything that you would like done before we do that. A little bit about the type of tractor pull it's going to be, essentially, there's three classes. Stock, which is out of the field, just how it sounds. There's a thirteen mile an hour class where the tractors have, have had a little bit of performance work, maybe some different tires or something, and then open farm. And those tractors go a little faster, but they're, they have very strict rules and safety equipment. Some of you may have been to the tractor pull in Beersford, or Ellisister, Wakanda, and that's the type of tractor pull it'll be. Nothing like what they have in Rock Valley, or at the Sioux Empire Fair, with the tractors that make thousands of horsepower and forty miles an hour. That's not what it is at all. We did decide to put a little bit of a twist on this to revive what we, what used to happen at Canton, and we're going to offer, we, we found some sponsors that will pay the entry fee for any active FFA or four-H member, so that those younger kids don't have to pay to do this, that, that'll all be taken care of. As far as the, the rest of the entry fees, it's going to be what's called a bragging rights tractor pull. There's no payback, because obviously, all of the proceeds are going to go towards construction of the new Fairgrounds. I think, oh, the, the four-H and FFA members will also, to save time, they will pull with the, the adults, but they're pulling against each other at the same time, so there will be an FFA, or four-H and FFA class winner, but they pulled in, in the same class as the adults. They may beat the adults and get a trophy for that, too, but. So we get to the point where the handout that Jeremy gave you, this is kind of our safety outline, and a little bit of the plan of what, what we're planning on doing. For this year, since the, the alfalfa field is under lease and things for another year yet, we'd like to do it on the west side of the Fairgrounds, on that, essentially, it was the dirt road that Goleman's went out to where they had their little shooting range. Just on the east side of the berm there, kind of off on the side, out of the way. Construction on the building should be done by then, and hopefully with the horse arena, that should all be taken care of as well. This is just kind of our basic safety plan. As we, when we blade the, the area for the track, the dirt that gets rolled off to the side will be in a berm on each side, roughly eighteen, twenty-four inches tall. Behind that, there will be a ten-foot barrier with a rope that no one is allowed between that rope and the dirt barrier, to put their lawn chairs, and they all have to be behind that. The entrances and exits to the track, where the pullers come in and leave, will all be roped off, so that nobody's standing or in, for lack of a better term, in the line of fire where they don't need to be. Traffic and parking, since it is a holiday weekend, and that is a state highway, we thought it would be best if people entered on the north end of the Fairgrounds, north of the current building right now. That takes them off of the highway when they come in to pay their entrance fee, which would be right by the north side of the building now, then they park in the parking lot. The current main gate would be exit only. The participants and tractor pullers will enter at the south gate along the alfalfa field, and tractors and trailers will be on the Fairgrounds itself. Safety and the rules, that's another attachment that Jeremy gave you, that basically gives breakdowns for the classes and, and safety equipment that pullers have to have. breakdowns for the classes and, and safety equipment that pullers have to have and things like that. We will have a liability waiver that, did you, is that in that? And that's in there too, but. State's attorney needs to look over that and make sure it's all, the way, what he would like to see in it as far as taking liability away, that, that is for all of the pullers to sign when they, when they register. We also will be carrying a general liability insurance in occurrence form policy and the, the foundation will, will carry this, with limits not less than $1 million per occurrence and $2 million in aggregate. Yeah, and that will be carried by the foundation. That's our plan. And with that, I guess, with the stipulation of the liability waiver and stuff being figured out, we're hoping to get the, the commission's blessing on this.
What time were you gonna have?
I believe it's at 1 o'clock. Hoping to be done with it before we need lights.
Yeah, I just wanna ask a question, Bill. Would you guys wanna look at the liability policy before we took formal action on this? Or are you okay with us giving our blessing and then?
So.
Right.
The insurance policy will come from Jensen Insurance in Beersford. That, that's the policy that they use for Elsister, Beersford, Wakanda, and I think Granite. So this was not the first time that this had been put in front of them of what was, you know, as, as far as what the city of Beersford and the Elsister, the Union, Union County Commissioners and the Elsister Fair required. The liability waiver was something new that Elsister brought on last year. And that's where the waiver came from, was from their, their fair commission.
They allow kids under 18 to participate?
They have, it has, they have to have a, a signed permission slip from their parents. The parents have to be there to sign it, so.
Do you want us to take ac, I mean, if we take action on this today, or do you wanna look at it further?
I believe we can take action on it today if there are some issues that we can't resolve or some, I assume if I'm gonna look at the insurance policy, they've done it before, it's gonna be exactly what we need.
Sure.
The other details we can hammer out, we work well together, I don't think there's been any problem so far. If there is, between now and the time that they do the tractor pull, we can come back and discuss it.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would move for approval. The only concern I have is that if Commissioner Gibbons gets in there and myself, that you don't give him a higher handicap. A little bit worried about that.
Well, I'll be driving red, so I know.
That's why you probably need it. But I would move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I do have one question.
Go ahead.
If you have, this is part of the, the Fourth of July, old-fashioned whatever, Lennox each year. I know they do have a community worship service, which I don't know what the time is, you know, some of those workers might be involved with that until it's over, so I don't know if your 10 o'clock registration would work or not, but I guess you have to coordinate that with them.
We will, if, if that would be the case, that they're doing something with the worship service, we will absolutely work around that, so.
Madam Chair?
All right, yes, Commissioner Poppins?
I'm excited about this. My family had the opportunity a few years ago to allow use of land for a tractor pull in the, an area by T that unfortunately couldn't, for several reasons, continue. The question I have is longevity of this. I think in the document it talked about replacing it back. Is that because the site is not your permanent location request, or?
Right, along that and where the dirt berm that we'll put back, essentially because it's, it's a, an area that's gonna get used for other things. We're hoping that when, how do I put this? So our, our use of the facility has been pretty aggressive compared to what the lease was written for the alfalfa. We were not planning on being able to have events in the summertime and stuff out there yet, so once the lease is changed for the alfalfa, we'd like to maybe move it out there permanently and possibly guardrail and some better, better facility features. But for the first year, this is.
This is okay?
Yep.
Tractor pullers sometimes have a pretty particular about how that track looks, so.
Yeah, they, they are.
You know, there's one other project that I think you should explore, and that is the advent of a antique or a classic car show sometime in August, because there is one at the Fourth of July when they have that. And that grows every year, but if you look at the numbers that some of these other communities, the number of people that are attracted, I mean, it's, it's a very, you know, low-budget situation, they get to come and put their hoods up and show off their vehicles, you know, so. That's something maybe in August or September.
Again, another example of why it was important to acquire property allowed expansion, current site is limited by size, is fortuitous to have a, a location like this that can expand and create more opportunities for the young people as well as the communities participate. And I applaud you for not just asking for a handout, you're gonna actually provide a service or an event that people can enjoy and come to and still support the 4H Foundation and their activities, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right.
We have a motion and a second on the table?
Yep, go ahead and call it.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item eight on our agenda. Good morning, Sheriff.
I'm just requesting approval, not authoriz, to authorize the chair to execute joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. We've received equipment, computer equipment, stuff to download digital evidence, and this will allow us to investigate crimes against children on the internet, which unfortunately is a growing problem and Lincoln County's not immune to it. So we were asked by the DCI to participate in this program, I think it's a good program. They've, they've supplied all the equipment and will supply all the training, and then our officers will be responsible for the, getting the training and using the equipment.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Charlie, call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, you're next.
Good morning.
Good morning. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. There are four abatement applications for review and/or approval from the commission. The first is a request for an abatement for taxes payable 2022 submitted by Edward and Marcin Brands for the property legally described as Lot 4C, Block 1 Whispering Ridge Edition, parcel number 281.67.01.004C, in the amount of $953.17. After review of the application for an abatement, that is my responsibility in this procedure, I have reviewed it based on South Dakota Codified Law 10-18-1, subsection 1, which is an error or a error in the description of the property or the valuation of the property thereof, in accordance to some opinions that are out there that are dealing with abatements and requests, specifically opinion 94-16, 79-14. There's a May 1949 opinion and an August 2021 opinion out there. They're quite old, but they're still relevant to my recommendation. It must be a clerical error or an incorrect legal description, which causes an over-evaluation, specifically in the May 1949 opinion, which states there were some involvements of personal property, which two Hogs were assessed with a value of $5,230, put in place by the county Director of Equalization, but it was supposed to be clearly $52.30. That is a probable cause for an abatement and not the, not the requested abatement that is set forth by the property owners described. It's more, it's, what they're trying to replace, the abatement application with the equalization process. Meaning this property was assessed at a value, in which we placed upon it for the 21 assessment year taxes payable in 2022. The valuation that we placed upon it was not in error. We came up with a value and we placed that value on the assessment roll. I see in the eyes of the abatement request how one would deem this as an error. Whether we do an assessment by hand back in 1949, 1921, and even in as late as 1994, or we do it, place an assessment by hand or by computer, it's essentially the same thing, in my eyes. Now, this is my recommendation to the board. You guys have the final approval of the abatement process. This is a multi-unit property, which have been split into their own individual parcel. I believe it's a five-plex, maybe a four-plex, I'm not, I can't remember, to be honest with you. This particular unit was assessed differently than the other units. What I mean by that is we have put in place market adjustments for one-story homes, two-story homes, townhomes, twin homes, single-family homes, many, many different type of market adjustments with our assessment process. This particular unit was assessed in our category as a single-family dwelling instead of a townhome, which caused a different valuation. There's a lot going on with this property, I understand. I'm trying to give you as many, as much information as I can during this.
Sure, it looks like it's, there's four townhomes in that particular building. So you're asking us to approve?
My recommendation is for denial.
Is for denial. So the assessment, there's nothing wrong with the assessment itself?
The assessment that was placed on it in 2021 was the assessment that we came up with. It is assessed, in, you know, in, not equitable to the other units. Which by many opinions out there, the ones that I stated, 94, 16, 79, 14, you know, that the abatement process is not put in place to oversee the assessment process or the appeal process of one's property. Meaning you don't wait until you get your tax statement to review your assessment. This could have been caught when we sent out the 2021 assessment last year. Again, this is your final review, you make the final approval or denial. This does go to the city for another look at the abatement application after the commission reviews it.
Anybody have any questions for Carla? If not, is there a motion?
I'm assuming the applicant isn't here or to speak?
I'm not sure if they're in the, I'm not sure if they're in the room. Boing, talked to her on the phone.
So it's more of a process problem than anything, wrong process?
Has it been rectified now?
Has it been?
Has it?
Yes, it has.
What, what do you wanna do, guys?
I'll give you a motion to affirm, but I'm going to vote against that motion.
I have a motion to approve the abatement application. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the abatement application. Any further discussion?
I think you probably explained this, Carla, but I wanna make sure I understand this. So I'm looking at their application filed by, looks like it was filed by Mrs. Brands.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ehrens, I can't hear you. What, what did you say, sir?
So I'm looking at the application for abatement. It was signed by Mrs. Brands and it says, she checks the box, "other," and then she makes the following comment. "This four-plex townhome was assessed as a single-felling, single-family dwelling as certified below." Then I think she notes that her husband passed away back in 2020. What, I mean, is that what you're, is that essentially what she's trying to argue here is that because it was assessed as a single-family home, even though in reality, well, I don't know if this is the case, but she's asserting that it's a four-plex townhome, that for some reason it should be taxed in a different manner?
I think one gets confused with our, our adjustment language versus, you know, how it is assessed by law. A single-family home is described by law as a lot, an acre, for which the lot is, and a dwelling that is individually parceled out. That's the true definition of a single-family home. And I think Ms. Brands was somewhat, I don't know if I don't, I wanna say confused, but she got confused with our assessment language versus, you know, the, the actual definition of a single-family home. Because like I described earlier, is when we do make adjustments on properties because of market valuations, we don't just put a flat rate of, you know, 5% increase for all. We try to narrow it down, is it, is it, is it our single-family homes, which we call, I guess, you know, it's not a townhome, it's not a twin home, it's not a commercial property, it's not a condo, it's not a two-story, you know? We individually describe that in our assessment practice. So I think that's where the term "single-family dwelling" came in her application. Cause I, I did personally speak with Mrs. Brands and I, I did explain and how her valuation was assessed differently than her other units that were right next door to her. Is that an error? Some could think that be an error, but the error according to an abatement process Some could think that be an error, but the error according to an abatement process is more of a clerical error, where we transposed the number. Just like I gave you the information, you know, the $5,230 instead of the $52.30. So the error in which for an abatement is the clerical type errors. And, and it's the, the, the error that she feels that happened is more, should be dealt on as a equalization process instead of the abatement process. You should be looking at it before you get your tax notice.
Would there be any change in the assessed value?
Yes.
Let me restate that. So if it was called a four-plex townhome, would it have a different assessed value as opposed to a single-family home?
Pardon? Say that again?
So if it was considered a four-plex townhome, would it have a different assessed value as opposed to if it's called a single-family home? Does, does that nomenclature change the assessed valuation?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, because of the, the market differentiates between homes that are connected to another versus standalone homes. So we make that adjustment on the assessment side.
And so is this a single-family home or is this a four-plex townhome?
This is a four-plex townhome.
Okay, and so it should be assessed as a four-plex townhome?
Yes.
Okay, and so if it's assessed as a four-plex townhome, we have to deny, under that logic, we have to deny her abatement then, or we have to approve it?
Did you?
I did vet this with Bill.
Did you make, yeah, did you make the adjustment?
Yes.
On the valuation?
Yes, for the 22.
2022, but not payable 21?
Correct, because it was just brought to us in, I believe, February of this year.
I probably would need the adjustment for payable 23.
Three.
And this will, we have the 2022, pay 23. This would correct 2021.
Relief for this year. Is her application for abatement for this year timely?
Is it?
Is it timely?
Yes.
Is she allowed, you know, she didn't miss any deadline by making an application?
No, she did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Not for, not for abatement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
I'm going to say no, and simply because if everybody wanted to come back and do it this way, we'd be setting not a good precedent. Anyway, it's fixed going forward. All right.
The next abatement is to abate taxes for 2021, payable 2022, on a property in Grant Township in the amount of $1,679.60 due to a veteran's exemption. Most of this information is confidential. That's why, why very little information is out here. But they, they met the criteria, they met the, they just did not meet the deadline. And so in accordance to 10-18-2 subsection, I'm not sure on the subsection right now, but you have the authority, you, you may abate these type of requests.
And when you say they did not meet the deadline, what was the deadline?
So the deadline is November 1 of each year, so they have to, they have to be permanently and totally disabled and then have their application into the equalization office by November 1.
And when did you get it?
I do not have the application in front of me.
This person is 100% disabled?
Yes.
Because of their service to the military?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? I see the date on the application is March 4th of this year. Any further discussion? If not, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Poppins?
Because I will grant any request that a veteran asks, even if it's late. Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Landine?
I want to vote yes, but I'm going to vote no, because it's the same thing as the former. It's the process and those dates are set.
If I may clarify, you do have the authority to abate these type of requests. This meets.
Okay, so the deadline is not?
Right, so it states, and I'm sorry, I do not have the law in front of me, but it states that if they have qualified but missed the deadline, the county commission has, may abate the taxes.
All right, then I will vote yes. So, while she carries. Next one, Carla?
Our next abatement is to approve the abatement of the real estate taxes payable in 2022 in the amount of $73.76, submitted by JFF Land LLC for parcel number 100 dot 49 dot 09 dot 4,000. The city purchased 10.41 acres in June of 2021, therefore exempting that portion of their tax bill.
Move to approve. They didn't have it, so they shouldn't have got it. So I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
The next abatement is to approve the abatement of real estate taxes payable in 2022 in the amount of $58.31, submitted by the city of Beersford for parcel number 260 dot 10 dot 02 dot 009. The property is exempt from tax, therefore the assessors' recommendation is to approve it.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thank you.
I'd consider a motion to convene as the 2022 Consolidated Board.
If we could have a motion to recess, then a motion to convene, then, okay.
Yep, if you want to do it that way, that's fine. Motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Now a motion to convene as the 2022 Consolidated Board of Equalization?
Move to convene.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then can we recess as consolidated and reconvene as Lincoln County?
Move to recess.
Don't we have to?
We do not have any consolidated.
Thank.
We have regular county Board of Equalization.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. Now I need another motion, a motion to convene back to Lincoln County.
Who was motion for recess as consolidated?
That was mine.
Good, thank you. And the second?
Mine, yeah.
Thank you.
So recessed, tell tale to correct.
Thank you.
What do you need now, Sean?
I think Commissioner Poppins' motion to convene it as a, oh, did we have a motion to convene as county?
I had a motion to recess.
Okay.
You need a motion to convene.
We need to vote on that. We need to vote on the recess, then we have to convene.
Yes. Any of a second on the recess?
Commissioner Schmidt?
All right, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to reconvene as county commission.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We took about three minutes to do nothing there.
Exactly, exactly what I thought. All right.
Well, we do have some administrative type changes that we can, did we?
Recession, now we're not.
Now we're back.
Our, our agenda for Board of Equalization doesn't start at 10:00 AM.
We're fine, we can start the Board of Equalization.
Okay.
They're, starting our Board of Equalization meeting. So would any, everyone, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We already did that.
I know, that's why I'm like, why do I have two of these?
We didn't take the, we didn't take the Pledge of Allegiance out there. I don't think that we necessarily would have to do it.
All right, so we've got a consent agenda on our Board of Equalization agenda.
We do need to convene as the county Board of Equalization.
It's confusing, but it's, it's definitely we have to do it.
I'll move to convene as county Board of Equalization.
I swear that's what we did before, but I'll second that.
No, it was consolidated.
Thank you, but that's how lovely this is. You have a motion and a second, Sean.
Thank you. Call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I think we just took another three minutes.
Now can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda on our Board of Equalization agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.